Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is October twenty-seventh. It's approximately five thirty. We're at one twenty West Washington Street. May I please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Aaron Sims.
Here.
Steve Brown.
Here.
Josh, can you take your mic off, please? There you go. Josh Leonard.
Attorney George Loy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shanda. Onto the minutes. If you gentlemen had a chance to review the minutes from our last border works meeting on September fifteenth, I'd like a motion to approve them.
I have reviewed those minutes. I didn't see anything that really stood out to me, so I make a motion to approve.
A second.
All right, let's go to vote. Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Okay, as far as the agenda goes, additions and deletions, we have one on utility adjustments. Is that the only one, Shanda?
Yes, the utility. Yeah, the utility ones.
Okay. Onto old business. Do we have any old business? We're gonna go to new business, which is utility adjustments. We have two this evening. One for a Terry Marshall in the amount of one hundred thirteen dollars and sixteen cents. Looks like there was a... What was there? An issue with the water here?
Is there a Mr. or Mrs. Marshall present?
Six thirteen South Main Street.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny that adjustment request.
A second.
All right. Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Thank you. We're on to the second one. This is for Mr. Mosher, Enchanted Forest. This is at fourteen thirty North Main Street. Looks like there was a toilet leak for the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-one cents. Everything fixed, Mr. Mosher?
Yep.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve that adjustment.
Okay.
To catch me there, I made the motion to approve the adjustment two seventy-seven forty-one. Just waiting for my cohort.
A second.
Here, there you go.
All right, Mayor Aaron Sims. Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Mr. Moser, if you can just go to Shanda, she'll have you sign something, and thank you for coming in.
Okay.
New business, item number two, fire department. Here's where promoted, public safety level number two.
Good evening.
Seems weird with that podium all the way back there.
I know, yeah. I haven't been here a while.
Yeah, six items?
Six items, I know. I hit you all at once. I just get them all together, so I don't... not do it in every meeting. Yeah, it's the plan.
All right, it looks like first up, but you got Cade Garrett.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, completed his training, I believe, going to public safety two. Is that correct?
Yep. All right, I make that motion to approve Cade to be moved to safety level two.
A second.
All right, Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Okay, new business, item number three, fire department. Ethan Shannon promoted a public safety level two.
Yeah, Ethan also completed the same training as Cade to move up to the second level.
Good. I make that a motion as well for Ethan Shannon to be moved to public safety level two.
A second.
Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Okay, new business, item number three, fire department. Ethan Shannon promoted a public safety level two.
Yeah, Ethan also completed the same training as Cade to move up to the second level.
Good. I make that a motion as well for Ethan Shannon to be moved to public safety level two.
A second.
Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Okay, new business, item number three, fire department. Ethan Shannon promoted a public safety level two.
Yeah, Ethan also completed the same training as Cade to move up to the second level.
Good. I make that a motion as well for Ethan Shannon to be moved to public safety level two.
A second.
Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Okay, new business, fire department, item number four, Dylan Mary pay increase.
Yeah, I believe Dylan's going to a public safety level three, what paperwork says. He's completed training back in September.
So he finished in September?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're assuming that when he gets the bump of pay increase?
Correct.
So will that be retroactive to...
I don't, I don't know that answer. I was gonna talk to Shanda about their dates, since kind of the long delay of a border works meeting, but that's a conversation her and I will, will happily have. Correct.
Right. That's a bump, like, if we don't happen to have a meeting for a month, that's a month that they've just missed of their increased wages. I just want to make sure that they get that.
They get their back, correct?
Yeah, notoriously, we always have, and that's just a conversation that, like I have with the clerk treasurer.
Yeah, as long as that... I make a motion to approve his bump to the next level.
And he's going to three?
Yep.
Okay.
To level three.
I second that.
All right, Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Okay, new business, this is item number five, fire department, Dylan Cruz's resignation.
Yeah, received a letter, letter resignation, just to have the border works accept that.
That was effective when?
The date was on that, the letter of resignation.
Yeah.
Do you not have it?
We...
Okay, I can get the date. Once we get done, I'll, I'll come up. I have it on my phone.
All right, that's cool.
Yeah.
I mean...
Let me say it. It was just like a two-sentence.
Gotcha.
It was effective immediately on Thursday, October second.
Then I make a motion to approve the resignation effective October two.
A second.
Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
New business, number six, fire department, I request to hire.
Yeah, so we have an open position now, so we're, request to hire. We just advertised, I think, late, late last week for the position. Obviously, we can't hire, we're not moving any further, further in the process till we get the okay from, from the border works.
You have the okay. I make that a motion to approve, to hire somebody.
Second that motion.
Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Okay, new business, fire department, number seven. This is a resolution two oh two five dash oh nine. This is transfer of an ambulance. Sorry?
Yeah, just for background, in this past July, the town of Brookston expressed to the chief and to the city that they would be interested in acquiring the surplus twenty fifteen Ford ambulance that the city is retiring. So the border works approved the resolution I prepared on August eighteenth, approving that transfer of the town of Brookston. The chief was then later advised that no, the town of Brookston doesn't want it. It should go to Prairie Township instead. So I drafted a, a new resolution, setting aside the Brookston resolution, trans, to transfer the, the ambulance to Prairie Township. And that's what's on the agenda, is item seven. I received an email from the Brookston Town Attorney today that no, the township, it's not to be transferred to the township or the town of Brookston. It should instead go to the Prairie Township Volunteer Fire Department. Now, I know the chief attended the town of Brookston's most recent meeting last Wednesday.
Yep.
I believe. And chief, you had, I guess, a different understanding of...
Yeah, they were going to, to accept the ambulance and then transfer it to the, the fire department there in Brookston. That was my understanding. They're gonna do it on the November twelfth meeting when their attorney was present. Their attorney wasn't present last week's meeting. So I don't know what has happened between then and, and this afternoon, but we are trying to, to... It's just been a process. It's been the most difficult thing to give away for, for free, so.
Have we, have we thought about painting the ambulance a different color, perhaps?
Last border works meeting on September fifteenth, I can motion to approve them.
I have reviewed those minutes. I didn't see anything that really stood out to me, so I make a motion to approve.
I second.
All right, let's go to vote. Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Okay, as far as the agenda goes. Additions and deletions, we have one on utility adjustments. Is that the only one, Shanda?
Yes, the utility, yeah, the utility ones.
Okay. Onto old business. Do we have any old business? We're gonna go to new business, which is utility adjustments. We have two this evening. One for a Terry Marshall. In the amount of one hundred thirteen dollars and sixteen cents. Looks like there was a. What was there? An issue with the water here?
There, Mr. And Mrs. Marshall present.
Six thirteen South Main Street.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny that adjustment request.
It's second.
All right. Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Thank you. We're on to second one. This is for Mr. Moser, enchanted forest. This is at fourteen thirty North Main Street. Looks like there was a toilet leak for the amount of two hundred and seventy seven dollars and forty one cents. Everything fixed, Mr. Moser? Yep.
I make a motion to approve that adjustment.
Okay.
To catch me there, I made the motion to approve the adjustment two seventy seven forty one. Just waiting for my.
I'll second.
Here, there you go.
All right, Mayor Aaron Sims. Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Moser, if you can just go to Shanda, she'll have you sign something and thank you for coming in.
Okay.
New business, item number two, fire department. Here's promoted, uh, public safety level number two. Chief.
Good evening.
Seems weird with that podium all day.
I know, I know. Yeah, I haven't been here a while.
Yeah, six items?
Six items, I know. I hit you all at once. I just get them all together, so I don't, not doing it every meeting. Yeah, it's the plan.
All right, it looks like first up, but you got, uh, Cade Garrett.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, completely is training, I believe, going to public safety two. Is that correct?
Yep. All right, I make that motion to approve, uh, Cade to be moved to safety level two.
I second.
All right, Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Okay, uh, new business, item number three, fire department. Ethan Shannon promoted a public safety level two.
Yeah, Ethan also completed the same training as Cade, uh, to move up to the second level.
Good, I make that a motion as well for Ethan Shannon to be moved to public safety level two.
Second.
Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Okay, new business, fire department, item number four. Dylan Mary. Pay increase.
Yeah, I believe, uh, Dylan's going to a public safety level three, um, the paperwork says. Um, he's completed, uh, training back in, like, September.
So he finished in September?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I'm assuming that when he gives the bump of pay increase?
Correct.
So will that be retroactive?
I don't, I don't know that answer. I was gonna talk to Shanda about their dates, uh, since kind of the long delay of a border works meeting, but that's a conversation her and I will, uh, will happily have. Correct.
If we're, we don't happen to have a meeting for a month, that's a month that they've just missed of their increased wages. I just want to make sure that they get that.
They get their back.
Yeah, notoriously, we always have, and that's just a conversation that, like I have with the court treasurer.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as that. I make a motion to approve, um, his bump to the next level.
And he's going to three?
Yep.
Okay.
To level three.
I second that.
All right, Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Okay, new business, this is item number. Five, fire department, Dylan Cruz's resignation.
Yeah, uh, uh, received a letter, letter resignation, uh, just to have in the border works accept that.
That was effective when?
Uh, the date was on that, uh, the letter of resignation.
Yeah.
Um, do you not have it? Okay, I can get the date. Once we get done, I'll, I'll come up. I have it on my phone.
All right, that's cool.
Yeah.
I mean.
It, let me say it. It was just like a two sentence.
Gotcha.
It was effective immediately on Thursday, October second.
Then I make a motion to approve, uh, the resignation effective October two.
I second.
Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
New business number six, fire department, I request to hire.
Yeah, so we have an open position now, so we're, uh, request to hire. Uh, we just advertised, I think, like, late last week for the position. Um, obviously, we can't hire, um, or we're not moving any further, uh, further in the process till we get the okay from, from the board works.
You have the okay. I make that a motion to approve. To hire somebody.
Second that motion.
Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Okay, new business, fire department, number seven. This is a resolution two oh two five dash oh nine. This is transfer of an ambulance. Sorry?
Yeah, uh, just for, uh, background. Uh, in, uh, this past July, the town of Brookston expressed, uh, to the chief and to the city that, uh, they would be interested in acquiring the surplus. Twenty fifteen Ford, uh, ambulance that, uh, uh, the city is retiring. So, um, the border works approved the resolution I prepared on August eighteenth, approving that transfer of the town of Brookston. Uh, the chief, uh, was then later advised that no, um, the town of Brookston doesn't want it. It should go to Prairie Township instead. So, uh, I drafted a, a new resolution, setting aside the Brookston resolution. Uh, trans- to transfer the, uh, the ambulance to Prairie Township. And that's what's on the agenda is item seven. I received an email from the Brookston Town Attorney today that no, uh, the township. Uh, it's not to be transferred to the township or the town of Brookston. It should instead go to the Prairie Township Volunteer Fire Department. Now, I know the chief attended the town of Brookston's. Uh, most recent meeting last Wednesday.
Yep.
I believe. And chief, you had, I guess, a different understanding.
Yeah, they were going to, to accept the ambulance, uh, and then transfer it to the, the fire department, uh, there in Brookston. Um, that was my understanding. They're gonna do it on the November twelfth meeting when their attorney was present. Their attorney wasn't present, uh, last week's meeting. Uh, so I don't know what has happened between then and, and this afternoon. But we are trying to. To get, uh, it's just been a process. It's been the most difficult thing to give away for, uh, for free. So.
Have we, have we thought about painting the ambulance a different color perhaps? People can't take yes for an answer.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but in any event, I, I understand, uh, that, um, to reduce that. To eliminate that next step of going to, uh, to reduce the, the step of going from Brookston to the township, there is a statutory procedure. For the ambulance to go from the city to the township. So, uh, four o'clock, I drafted this revised. Resolution twenty twenty five doing that, transferring the ambulance to the Prairie Township Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated. With the same terms for no consideration, they're not paying anything for it, as is condition without warranty. Um, and it sets aside that your resolution that was adopted on August eighteen, setting that aside, uh, for the transfer to Brookston, it goes to the. Volunteer Fire Department. So it's in a position to be approved. Yes, need a motion.
I make a motion. To approve the transfer. People in sweep states. To, uh, Brookston. No.
Prairie.
Prairie, Prairie Township Volunteer Fire Department. Prairie Township Fire Department.
Yep.
Resolution twenty twenty five.
Dash oh nine.
Dash oh nine.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I, I, I second that.
Thank you. Mayor Aaron Sims. Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business number eight, this is wastewater. Modify the job classification for a certified laboratory tech. And Bruce?
Hello. So we're wanting to change the requirements to our certified laboratory technician. Um, gonna reduce, uh, years' experience to fit our. Employees that we do have. Um, I don't think any of them could meet the requirements from the previous.
And obviously, and I've, I've got the, the emails from Bob and so forth, and you, you guys are cool with that, and this is what you want? I mean, it's worked out for you.
In order for.
Stay.
To pick an employee to fit the requirements.
Yep.
We have to lower the requirements, mostly, um, about the years of service.
Experience.
And experience, yeah, because they just don't have it.
Yeah.
Not yet.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to approve the, uh. Job classification. For wastewater there, for the lab tech.
Mayor Aaron Sims. Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
New business number nine wastewater, this is an invoice from HWC. Invoice number zero nine eight dash S dash nineteen. Professional services. From. Eight twenty five through nine twenty eight. And the amount of. Twenty eight thousand one hundred ninety six dollars.
Well, disappointing to see now HWC rep. Here. They're asking for two day. I make a motion to approve the invoice number twenty twenty four dash oh nine eight dash S seven. Dash zero 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 nine. We're close, little guy, but. Did I miss a zero?
No, I s- I second that.
That's definitely so.
I said it. I said it.
Seven starts with an S though. Okay, so Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Okay, new business number. Uh, ten, this is the wastewater, this is HWC with F and K, so pay F number three for the lift station. Two hundred ninety two thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars. You guys been happy with that listation so far?
I was there today, and, uh, they're working on the, getting the groundwork done. Uh, they're finishing up the grading and putting seed down. I really don't know how much of that seed is gonna take. But we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Mitch, are you happy with it out there?
Yeah, well, yeah. We talked about that today.
Yeah, okay.
For that portion of it anyway, he's happy.
That force, wow, all right, a lot to unearth there. Overwhelmed by all the positive.
Actually, I can't wait till it gets online. It's gonna be a great asset to us.
The microphone.
It will be a great asset to us.
I make a motion to approve a application number three for F and K construction of two ninety two eighteen fifty.
For F and K or for HWC?
Well, it's really. HWC.
Oh, good, yeah. I'll, I'll second that motion if it was named correctly.
Mayor Aaron Sims.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Permission to hire?
We're asking for permission to hire a laborer. Or to advertise for the hire.
Makes sense. Are, we're, are we down? We're down people?
We're down one.
Yeah, we're down one, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, I make that motion to approve the ability to advertise to hire somebody for. Our water department.
I second. That motion.
Mayor Aaron Sims. Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Thank you.
New business, uh, number twelve.
This is concerning the waste, um, our trash contract. For two thousand twenty six through two thousand twenty, it's with On Point.
This contract, uh, memorializes the accepted bid from On Point. For, uh, five years, beginning January first of, uh, next year. And it was, uh. The lowest and best bid, and it's at a. Consistent monthly dollar amount of twenty two thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty cents per month. Through the end of. Twenty thirty. So, uh, it's in a posture to be, uh, or a motion for it to be approved.
Uh, the bid looks good. Looking forward to doing business with On Point. Um, I make a motion to approve this. Collection contract from twenty twenty six to twenty thirty with the company of On Point.
I second that.
Aye.
Steve Brown.
Aye.
Josh Leonard.
Aye.
Onto miscellaneous and other matters. Josh, anything, my friend?
This Friday night, our Twin Lakes Indians. Play another playoff game because they won last week. And so they're playing this Friday night at home. At home, what time does the game start? Seven, they're playing Peru. Pretty exciting. Um, I was at the last game, they, they played really well. So just come, come out and support your community. Uh, it's a little cold, so dress warm. But, uh, we've got a great announcer, we got a good team, so this Friday night, don't miss it.
Uh, I don't, not right at the moment.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Three to five thirty.
Three to five.
Yeah, so let's have fun, let's be safe, a lot of kiddos running around. Um, next board of works meeting, as of right now, is November seventeenth at five thirty. Please adjourned.
Please stand for the pledge.
Yeah. Let's let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic which is to man, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mayor Aaron Sims.
Here.
Gary Allen.
Present.
Bill Cheever.
Present.
Kim Kramer.
Present.
Tim McQuinn.
Present.
Dave Petty.
Present.
I know, it's her attorney George Loy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shanda. Onto minutes. If you've had a chance to review the minutes from our last council meeting on October sixth, like to get a motion to approve those.
I'll move that we accept the minutes.
I'll second. Gary Allen.
Aye.
Bill Cheever.
Aye.
Kim Kramer.
Aye.
Tim McQuinn.
Aye.
Dave Petty.
Aye.
Uh, let's go onto the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Mr. Cheever?
No, I do not believe so.
Shanda?
Nope.
Nothing, okay. Citizen participation. Department head reports, these have been written.
We're not.
Apologize. You coming up, Brittany? Yep, okay.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Brittany.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor Sims, City Council, and everyone in attendance. Uh, my name is Brittany Blazek, and I'm the president of the Meadowlon Elementary PTO. I'm here tonight to discuss and inform you guys of a community event we have coming on, coming up. Um, it is the first annual Meadowlon Elementary Community Chili Cook-Off. It's being held November fifteenth, which is a Saturday, eleven to two at West Bays. Uh, it is featuring nine local restaurants as they are competing uh to be the best chili of White County. We'll have live music and some activities for people of all ages. Tickets are five dollars per person, twenty dollars per family. They are live, you can purchase them online going to our Meadowlon Elementary PTO page under the event, the Chili Cook-Off. Um, all proceeds do go directly to sponsoring student and staff initiatives. Um, and we're just grateful to the city allowing us to use West Bays and for your continued support with our school system. And um, we hope that everyone attends, enjoys the food, and makes this first uh annual cook-off a success.
What was the, what was the date again?
November fifteenth, Saturday, November fifteenth, eleven to two.
Great.
Brittany, thank you. I know you put a ton of hours into this. Thank you. This will, this will be a big success, I have no doubt. Anyone else for citizen participation? Department head reports? Any questions concerning department reports? If there's none, we are on to old business. Two thousand twenty-six budget. This is the second reading. We need an approval for the second reading to accept the budget. Do we have a motion?
So I will uh make a motion to uh to approve the uh twenty twenty-six uh budget, uh which is ordinance number, Gary, you have that. Uh, yeah. Twenty twenty-five dash twelve on the second reading.
I'll second.
Gary Allen.
Aye.
Bill Cheever.
Aye.
Kim Kramer.
Aye.
Tim McQuinn.
Aye.
Dave Petty. He can't, he can't.
Can you hear me at all?
Yeah, it's the extension of the uh statutes in our laws.
Budget items. That's great.
And I'm gonna, that's, yeah, so I want to um, now that the voting's done.
Yeah.
I do want to acknowledge all the work that went into this from all the department heads. I want to thank you all for all your efforts. Please pass that along to everyone that, we appreciate all those efforts, uh Gary, Shanda, Mayor, uh Kim, um, Tim, I know you came in late, but appreciate all the things that you were able to contribute to, Dave. So, uh, very good job. I know it's a little bit later than we wanted to be, so next year we have uh aspirational goals of getting it done a little sooner uh like we did this year, but maybe next year we get that accomplished, so thank you, everyone.
Okay, new business. First one up is Parks Department. This is for the Highland Trail, and it's a grant, and they're gonna give us an update on it. Hi Mitch.
This is kind of exciting. Um, okay, uh first off, I'd like to say, um, what you see before you is a composition of existing trails, trails we're hoping to put in to make connections throughout the entire um city of Monticello. Um, as far back as I can remember, um, we've been talking about trail systems throughout our community, trails increase property values, they attract businesses, they um also um uh uh help the community become healthier, so they actually reduce health cost. Um, and a good example, you know, um, if you look over here, the long trail going out to Indiana Beach, um, that's kind of the north end of Monticello. Um, you know, when they first put that in, um, I, I didn't see a lot of people using it, and now I see people using it every single day. Biking, family walking, you know, walking their dogs, um, stopping and talking and greeting each other, so it's a great way to bring people together and also connect our community. Um, one of the things we really um are looking at uh doing is connecting parks, schools, and points of interest throughout the community of Monticello. And um, so I'm gonna, you know, we, we've had a group of people working together, and the mayor, with Mike, God love you, back here, um, also Brad Ward from the, from the uh county and myself, um, discussing where these trails could go, what's the easiest uh routes, you know? Um, and also we've worked with NIPSC, uh, we've talked with NIPSC, and they've given us permission to utilize the Highline Trail. Um, also I spoke with Dave Jordan just uh last week, towards the end of the weekend. There's a portion of the abandoned line that goes through a property he owns there on Hanawalt, he's, he's, he's good with us through there with that trail, so, you know, using the Highline and talking with others, um, we, we've got a really, really good plan, so I don't know if, uh, yeah, so if we look back here on this map, um, you can kind of see, let's see, where are we at here, like? Okay, so the words are upside down, yeah. Okay, so Northwestern Avenue, so um, uh, I, I will, I'll talk a little louder as I go here, so anyway.
What we're looking to do with that new section of trail starting at the Northwest Avenue and running into the North Main Street, and then going down to the Highline Trail, Highline Trail, that is the power right way that runs through Mitchell Springs Park. And they allow us to, they allow us to utilize some of the areas, so um, if you look at that, the, the new trail section would come off on Northwestern, run down the Highline Trail, hit the uh Road Portal now. There's a section of Road Portal between um where we would be connecting behind um uh Rokee down to Fisher Street that is still active, so we're looking to work at getting a lot of part of this trail. Um, and um then from there, um, the part that goes down to um from Fisher to Hanawalt, that's already abandoned. So we can utilize that, that's part that uh, good by the skate park, that's another connection, we have the main school house there that has its own building that came from the, it's a fashion, um, it's right there. And then we'll be possible to source from Frank Towne Bridge, it makes me feel a little better. And then we could turn and go to, and go ahead and do the next slide. You know, um, from there, we go uh down to Hanawalt to the west, and then get the Highline again, Highline again, which comes up to um, it was that Third Street. And then on to the Road Portal, we go on the other side of the Road Portal, up to the Highline, get that, make this out to um where Hubbard is.
Would that be a sidewalk on Third Street or on the road?
On Third Street.
That whole section.
That section would be um, it can be either on the road or actually part of the trail. We are looking at a couple places where we can move this thing, um, and we'll sign, we'll get there and think that works. Um, so, um, but with, um, this section of the trail, we end up here by um the intersection there, um, by was that the company, company there?
Almost, yeah.
Yeah, almost.
Line down.
And then, and then from there, we just, you know, we're running right over to the existing sidewalk at High School. Um, so you're making a connection there, and then just not keep all that on there from there, you got the trail off anyway. So that would, that's, that's where we're looking to make the connection through the heart of Monticello, again, working with NIPSC, utilizing the Highline Trail, and um, uh, also making parts of the Road Portal to get that, make that connection. Now that's just the beginning, that'll be phase one. Um, uh, and then phase two, if we're, uh, go ahead and do the next slide, see if. So phase two is on the south end town, oh well, no, this would be part of the one. Going south down town, you see we have um, we have uh, all fair nature park, if you see the blue trails, we'd be this already existing, we connected that, come down to All Fair Park, so we raise it up. You have the trail system already there, um, along the Road Portal, where we'd like to do the first phase is actually go a little bit more to the east, push it up. Or that's on there, we get a new section that would connect the existing trail there at All Fair Hinch Park down to Tyoga. Um, so, um, that would be something that we'd be looking to do in this first phase, so with that, it's just a general concept, um. Now phase two, that on there?
Next slide.
Next slide, go to the next slide. Phase two, if you go back up towards um Main Street, where you open your apartment. The Highline Trail is right behind those two apartments, and that's where we're gonna be connecting with, um, basically north to drive. We go down to the part that's in the middle, so that would be a future plan. Now we're focused right now on the next trail from uh Northwestern down to um Washington Street, and also the small section down by Tyoga. So with that said, um, you know, this is something that the community um has shared with us in, in past five-year master plans, and even in a current five-year master plan, page one thirteen, that's one of the things that they want to see is connectivity in the community and trail systems that connect our parks, schools, and points of uh interest. It's number three on the priority list as far as planning goes. Um, so um, we have, I think we have community support, majority of the community is looking forward to seeing a trail system throughout their community that would create these uh, these opportunities. Um, and, you know, actually businesses as well, jumping in on things, so um, I'm not gonna read this to you, uh, but I gave each of one, each of you one of these. Um, and uh, it talks about, you know, or if you look at this front page, it shows where the trail comes from Indiana Beach, and then there's a gap between the south end of Monticello and the north end of Monticello. So we want to, basically wouldn't want to fill in this gap um with, with uh, with what we're looking to do. Um, you know, uh, uh, some of the, some of the um things that uh we look, uh, look at as far as economic impact of trails. Um, uh, right now, um, outdoor recreation now outpaces oil and gas industry and economic impact, okay? So that's kind of a, so the outdoor recreation industry is just built on trails, making trails an important economic driver, so it does drive the economy. Um, trails both drive tourism and make communities a more desirable place to live. And I've taught, you know, I've been to parks and recreation meetings, and, and that's all I ever hear is, man, when the trail went in, things really started moving for us. A lot of people are attracted to this area. Um, you know, there's been, you know, you hear the, the negatives are like, well, this guy said he really didn't want to see it, but after it went through, he was all for it. Um, and I hear that a lot, so, so this is something that I think um is moving us in the right direction, and I think, and we need to move forward with that. With that said, um, I've said a lot in a little bit of time here. Um, with that said, we have been working with Lock Mueller Group, and um, they've, they've, have you, did you all get their proposal? From Lock Mueller Group? Okay, so um. Okay. Okay. So there's a proposal from Lock Mueller Group, Lock Mueller Group to, to apply for two grants. Okay, the first grant um would, would be for, it's um, for uh, it would go for, it's, it's the Indiana Department of Health, and um, it's a, it's a grant that would allow us to apply for um a planning grant, okay, for the, for this main trail. So we want to apply for that planning grant. Um, and then also there's another grant um that is through the um, LAP State's um uh funding, it's um, it's a federal aid grant that would allow us to apply for uh an eighty-twenty grant for development of the trail on the south end of Monticello. Um, that, that trail estimated, uh, that portion between uh Maine and Tyoga is estimated to be five hundred and fifty thousand. It's an eighty-twenty grant, so you're looking at a hundred and ten thousand dollars to fund that, um, if we're awarded that, that uh, that grant. Um, so um, that, uh, Lock Mueller would, would apply for that grant. Um, and the uh, uh, planning grant that we're looking at for twenty thousand dollars. And I would like to move forward, um, uh, we have Angie Moyer here from Lock Mueller, would you like to say a few things, Angie? I would like your permission to move forward with that, uh, applying for that grant. So. Yeah.
Hello, everyone, I'm Angie Moyer, I'm a project manager with Lock Mueller Group. And um, our proposal, I pretty much Mitch has covered majority of it. Um, but right now, the Indiana Department of Health Grant is open right now, and it closes on November fourteenth, so we only have a few weeks to get this prepared. And it's very important that we have someone closely involved to help us get uh community stakeholder letters supporting this project. And um, so that will help with the planning, they'll match up to twenty thousand dollars. Dollar for dollar. And then Mitch touched on the other grant that opens up on November third through end dot. It's federal funding, um, the window closes December fifth. And this will cover for all phases to construct the Tyoga Road Trail. Um, so it'll cover design, right-of-way acquisition, construction and inspection up to eighty percent. Um, so we've, it's, you know, no, November fourteenth will be here, or December fifth will be here before we know it, especially November fourteenth is even closer. Um, so we're happy to assist uh Monticello with getting everything together to put together a successful application for your community. Are there any questions?
What, we're finding stuff. The, the, there's a section that we would like to put in between Main Street, you go to, go to um, Alter Nature Park, one parking lot, you got the trail comes up to the road there. No, it's, it's out there.
Oh, it's out.
Right there with the parking lot, there, we're at Alter Nature Park. We got the park, and the trail comes to that point, and you cross, you cross the road. Go over towards the dentist office.
Okay.
And from that point to Tyoga, we'd like to establish a trail there. And this is a, this uh grant that they would be applying for would be for establishment of that trail.
And this is a walk-in night light?
Uh, oh yes, that, that's, that's one of the things that it would also do, there is, there are no sidewalks between um Maine and Tyoga. United Way is down there, and uh, that would, you know, that's another, that's another connection that would extend our sidewalks um at that end of town, but it would be a safe passage for patrons, so. We'd be connecting not only to Tyoga, but giving them a pathway to which, a safe one, where they would be walking down there. Because they can't right now, no, they can't, they have to walk the new road. And if you, if you ever, if you've ever driven off, like, come off of Main Street, or seen people come off of Main Street, you take that corner right down around Tyoga. They're moving pretty quick, in twenty-five miles an hour, and make that turn, and start to see. It is. You have anything to add, Mitch?
Good question, Mitch.
Sure.
Um, has your board?
Um has your board planned ahead for your crew to maintain another, what, three miles of trails or whatever through town? Um I assume that would fall back on to you or?
I'm not sure. We'll have to have to talk about that. Yeah, so but you know, uh what we can do to maintain, we will. So. But again, this is something that uh according to our five-year master plan, our community wants, they desire. Um and I want to thank Mike and everybody else that's uh, you know, been involved in talking about how this could happen, um where the trails are going, um and what we could do to make, to improve our community. So.
Mitch, you mentioned property value. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, that this helps the property value side?
Um I've 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 seen, I mean, and it's in your documentation here where um example, for example, uh uh trails coming relatively close to homes and areas, um you you see a ten percent increase in property values. I've seen upwards of fifteen percent increase in property values. And as you get further away from the trails, the increase doesn't happen quite as drastically. So you know, we will see um homes where this go goes by um will be more desirable. Um you know, that that's what you're seeing in statistics. I can't say that it will, but that's that's what the statistics show. That increases property values. Um uh you know, I I keep thinking of the bike shop on the south end of Monticello. You know, I could see, I could see one on the north end as well. You know, so there's another little business that could pop up and um go from there. But they also, you know, trail systems also attract people to a community. Cause I've heard people ask me, well, when are you going to put a trail to town? Or you know, how do we get downtown on trails? You know, I wouldn't need to ride a bike downtown. Um and that's another destination, getting to downtown Monticello. So.
And the big difference between this trail versus like the nature trail, this actually leads to different destinations or different?
Yes, yeah. Nature trail, the nature trail is primarily there at Alter Park. Um we are looking to expand that at uh Jordan Park next year um with the grant that we applied for with the uh Indiana Trails Program. And um this would just be an extension throughout the entire community. And that's uh, again, it's something that um the community is indicated to the five-year master plan that they'd like to see. So I guess I'm asking your permission to um allow Lock Mueller to go ahead and move forward with this uh with this uh um applying for those two grants for the twenty thousand.
Uh Mitch, I've got, I got another, I got a few more questions to follow up here real quick. So when are these uh and and maybe you can answer this. When are these grants? We, I got the timeline for for what we have right now, which, you know, we're talking a week here to make some pretty significant decisions on something that this was just my hand today.
I know.
Hope you understand that.
Yeah.
So my question is, is when do these opportunities come up again?
So the indot call for applications, they offer that every year.
So it's every year around November timeframe? Okay.
Now, the Indiana Department of Health, I know they had one last year and the previous year. I assume they'll continue, but I don't know that for sure.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah.
That, okay.
And the thing with the Indiana Department of Health Grant, they will quickly be letting the communities know who will be awarded because they anticipate work to begin in the winter and um be to final completion in September of twenty-six.
Okay, so with, when we talk about that, we're talking, that's the planning grant.
That's the planning grant.
Right?
Yes.
And I apologize if I don't quite understand.
No, you're fine.
Right, because I read it as fast as I could.
Good.
So that's a planning grant, and that's a dollar-for-dollar grant.
Yes.
Right?
And that's for the High Line Trail project.
So and then Lock Mueller would enter into a contract with the city for twenty thousand dollars for a planning grant?
This is just for application assistance.
Okay, so how much is our planning grant going to cost us? Is that going to be the forty thousand, this dollar-for-dollar match on twenty thousand?
Um did you and Jessica discuss this, Mayor? I apologize.
No.
Um I do not have that information in front of me. Um but I can get, definitely get those details for you. Um so I apologize for that.
Oh, not not a problem. And you know, look, um I like trails. I've, you know, we you, we go back to trails for a long time. We've always talked about how we can incorporate these trails into it. And I like the idea that we're thinking about it and we're proactively looking for solutions to get there.
Sure.
Uh my big concern here is uh it, I think from for for me, I need to be able to step back and say, okay, what exactly are we doing? What exactly is the cost? What exactly is the timeframe that we're looking at um in order to to get this kind of going through? So um I guess.
And 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 just just something else to throw out there. I know with looking, I've been looking at all kinds of alternatives for you to apply for for funding. And they, majority of these grants, they want to study. They want to see that you've put some effort into this and um that definitely increases your chances, you know, you know, for the better.
Yep.
Um so just, I just wanted to put that out there because that's um, most grants are asking those questions. Do you have a study?
Right, yeah, yeah, that all makes sense, right? And that's one of the reasons we did the uh five-year master plan, right? So when we apply for say, land and conservation and some of these other grants, we've got that supporting documentation. I think we've got a pretty good start on this. I don't know that we have everything we need. Certainly, we have to do the planning grant side of it, which at this point, I don't think I know how much that costs. Right, but I do know that it's it's need to be done by the end of next week. And I'm sitting here saying, I I've been in government as long as I have and nothing moves that fast.
That's on November fourteenth.
Yeah, November fourteenth. That's a couple of weeks and that's that's
Here before we know it.
That's getting with the program.
The Board of Works will also need to approve those.
Yeah. I think the, I think the planning grant itself, um we we've, we kind of bumped the engineers about this and to see where that would be. Um and the the, we're looking at probably to do like all the, you know, right-of-way acquisition, all that other stuff and and all that. Get things set up in that planning grant, um then not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, that was.
Is that, is that for all the planning or just this phase?
That's for, I think we talked about doing the entire plan, all of it. When we, when we had that discussion, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And do we have, is that, is that documented in some form or another?
No, that was just discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So um I think I could guess, again, I'm all about this. I agree with everything. I think from my, from my standpoint, I would sure like to uh uh not take action on this, table this until uh we get some additional information. So that's the motion I would make. I make a motion that we table this till uh we can get some additional information.
I think we're there for the price on the.
Yeah.
Mitch, I got another question. This is the section that would lead to Tyoga.
Uh the south end, yes.
Yeah, and so would that, would that include the Tyoga Hill down to the bridge?
Would it? No, that's, that's already part, that's already a trail coming up to the top of the hill. And um you know, the 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 part of the the um LPA grant that they would be applying for is a federal aid grant. And that would be an eighty twenty match. So if if we, if they were to apply for that now, um with that eighty twenty, um like I said, their estimates between, it would cost between five hundred, around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that section from north, from South Maine to Tyoga. Okay, and we would pay twenty percent of that, so roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Okay, but it would, it would connect to the Tyoga Hill
It would connect.
Trail that's already there.
Yes, and then we go to Alter Nature Park and also provide a corridor for pedestrian paths. So that that's the LPA program application.
We have a meeting next Monday as well.
Yep.
Do you think you can get more information by next Monday?
I think, yeah.
And that would be the third. You give you eleven days.
Well, let me ask you guys this, guy. Um would you uh look, look this over that, what I gave to you? Put your questions together, get those to me so I can, so I can answer, try to answer everything that you uh you have questions about.
So if, just to confirm, you want to know what it would cost to put the actual study together? Is what you're looking for? Just to make sure it's clear.
That would be part of it.
Yeah, so we're being asked to vote to allow you to spend money on a planning grant. So I'd like to know what that planning grant is going to cost.
Yep.
Right, and I would like to know what that gets us.
And and I can go over those things with you, but you'll, I have that between now.
And you know, really to Tim's point, you know, if we can get this going now, we do have a meeting on third, like Tim mentioned and, you know, so I'm not saying it's out of the realm. I'm just saying we've, we got to have information as quick as possible. Yep.
That doesn't mean that we will do it next Monday, but we might. We have that opportunity, yeah.
Okay, so um I'll just highlight, I don't know, since you haven't had a chance to review this proposal. So in regards to the Indiana Department of Health Planning Grant, the part of this twenty thousand dollars initial fee includes having two meetings with Monticello. Will assist the city with uh drafting a cover letter of the city's commitment to participate and adopt a plan. Will draft a three-page response with general information defining the vision for the trail corridor, how our master plan contributes to achieving the vision and mention existing planning documents, and how the plan addresses community health needs, identify any gaps, barriers or opportunities that should be addressed in the plan and describe a public outreach process effort. Will also assist the city in obtaining a minimum of three letters of support from community stakeholders. Hopefully, you'll have more than three, but the application requires a minimum of three. This will include developing a one-page project summary to convey key point details and a project support letter template to share with community organization and stakeholders. And then we also will have to go through a Indiana Department of Health interview as part of this application. Regarding the uh indot call for applications, which we call NOFA, that's your federal dollars, will assist, uh will will organize two meetings with the city to coordinate the application process and content, and will assemble information and prepare applications, including draft city's financial commitment letter on your letterhead, provide a map of sufficient scale to clear clearly identify beginning and ending points of project, obtain photographs of the project area, draft a well-defined scope of work and detailed independent cost estimate per phase, research and coordinate with existing utilities to identify potential conflicts and potential for eligible relocation reimbursement cost. We will also perform a high level of preliminary red flag investigation to identify any potential hazards or impacts. So that there is a lot of effort putting together a cost estimate for design, the construction estimate and the scope for that application. Um so that's just trying to think if there's anything else I should touch on um.
I'll forward this to you tomorrow. What she's gotten.
Yeah, but I I will um you know, some of the things that's going, we're going to need assistance is exactly well, I shouldn't jump ahead. I apologize. I will get you a fee for your um planning study. Do you want an actual, um but is it just a summary of what we anticipate this cost to be sufficient for your meeting on Monday?
Make the question a little bit.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, now, uh excuse me, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'll I'll make sure we get on that right away, get that to you as soon as possible.
The council would uh approve the funding, I mean, where the money's coming from. Uh and also um council has to approve um any application for any grant. But any contract between Lock Mueller and the city uh requires the Board of Works, which is not this body.
Okay.
Um.
And are they meeting Monday as well?
No. Your letter, your letter concludes with, if this proposal meets with your approval, you will prepare the project contract. And that, that, you know, that needs
Um.
Preparation and review, of course, and the Board of Works, again, is the, and is the body that approves that contract between Lock Mueller and the city.
Okay, and when does the Board of Works meet, meet again?
November seventeen, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I I do know I was directed from um Jessica Clark, the engineer, that I could um if we receive a verbal notice to proceed in a public meeting, that would be acceptable for Lock Mueller anyways. I'm not sure what you, you know, I'll make sure we do whatever you want, but she did give me that go ahead just because of that tight turnaround to get these applications done.
For Lock Mueller to go ahead and do what? No, for Lock Mueller to go ahead and do what?
Assist with the applications. So I have a motion from bill to table for additional info.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, Gary Allen?
Aye.
Bill Cheever?
Aye.
Kim Kramer?
Aye.
Tim McQuinn?
Aye.
Dave Paddy?
All right, thanks.
A little blurry there, Dave.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me at all? Yeah, thank you.
New business number two.
Fuck.
Approval for ordinance number two oh two five dash thirteen for the two thousand twenty-six elected official salary ordinance.
This is this is first reading of that uh of that ordinance. Uh and I believe the salaries, uh Bill, if you want to summarize it, is that okay?
Yeah, I can uh to summarize this, um as I think council's seen a copy of this uh out early. This is the um elected official um ordinance. Um the um uh pay um is unchanged from from last year. So um all those have stayed the exact same as the uh the current year. No increases for uh any elected official. Or uh I think a couple of, it's just all elected, right? That was all elected?
This is all.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to pass the uh ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen for the elected official salary ordinance for twenty twenty-six.
For a second, for consideration of second reading.
Yep.
Afterward, yeah.
For second reading.
Yep. I'll second.
All right, Gary Allen?
Aye.
Bill Cheever?
Aye.
Kim Kramer?
Aye.
Tim McQuinn?
Aye.
Dave Paddy? Thanks.
Number three, um approval allowance docket for pay period ending October fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Shannon, just a question. The the printed pages that were in the box, is that this one or is that the next one?
The APVs. Yeah, I emailed the allowance docket to you all.
No further questions. I'll make a motion to approve the uh allowance docket.
I'll second.
All right, Gary Allen?
Aye.
Bill Cheever?
Aye.
Kim Kramer?
Aye.
Tim McQuinn?
Aye.
Dave Paddy?
New business, I have number four, motion to approve the APVs.
I looked those over before our meeting. I didn't see anything that stood out as needing to be questioned. So I will make that motion to accept the APVs for this time period.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Gary Allen?
Aye.
Bill Cheever?
Aye.
Kim Kramer?
Aye.
Tim McQuinn?
Aye.
Dave Paddy?
Okay, folks, miscellaneous, anything left is trick or treat this Saturday. That is from six to eight. And we also have the truck or treat from, uh is it three thirty? The three to five, three to five behind the post office. Anything else, John? Tim?
Uh last meeting, we had uh the motorcycle fellow was here and got permission uh for his fundraiser. Um, he reported to me that evening that they thought they raised somewhere around five thousand dollars for that nurses, uh, scholarship fund. Um, sounds like there's, uh, some internal mischief maybe going on with that group. But, uh, they raised the money and now they're trying to figure out how to, how to disperse it or invest it for scholarships. But, uh, I know that Joe was very thankful that we were able to do that, uh, and pull that off.
Meeting will be on November third, six P M. Beings adjourned.